Welcome to the City Council's March 22 regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with public health guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present in the City Council chambers. Vice Mayor Jen Woolison, City Council Member Drew Combs, City Council Member Ray Mueller, interim City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Niradhori, City Attorney, uh, City Clerk, City Council members and staff participating remotely, City Council Member Cecilia Taylor. City Clerk Judy Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, and again echoing a welcome to our regular March 22 City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide public comment on any item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you may press star nine at that time. That concludes my introductions at this time. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council member reports. Staff will be providing an update to consent items E3 and information item G2. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? City Council Member Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I have questions on E6.
Thank you. Public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for a public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under Agenda Sections Consent Calendar, Regular Business, Information Reports. City Clerk Karen, please call for a general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on Item D, Public Comment, for items not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Susan Earhart.
Uh, hi, yes. Um, I saw something really nice taking place in the city this weekend and just wanted to make sure that the right people were acknowledged for their efforts and that the City Council was aware of it. Uh, my husband and I were taking our usual Sunday morning walk along the Bay Trail headed to Bedwell Park. And as we walked, two Menlo Park police officers on bike patrol passed us. Um, it's the first time we've seen the bike patrol officers, uh, in that area. They called out hello to us. Um, later on, as we got to Bedwell, we saw the officers in one of the parking lots there. They were talking to some families with small children and, uh, giving stickers to the kids. And it was really, really a sweet, um, kind of interaction that we saw. And so I just wanted to thank Chief Norris and the officers for making this effort and for doing, um, taking steps to make sure that, uh, the people of Menlo Park have positive interactions with the police and, and making them more accessible. And again, I just, uh, I was very heartened by the incident and wanted to, um, make sure that the council knew that this was happening. And again, thank the chief. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the last call for public comment on Item D for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Earhart, for the comment. It's really good to hear. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment for closed session item J1.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, we would like to, uh, accept public comment for our closed session item J1, Conference with Legal Counsel for Anticipated Litigation. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on closed session item J1. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion, unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our consent calendar, Item E1, Adoption of City Council Minutes, E2, Adoption of a Resolution to Continue Conducting City Council and Advisory Body Meetings Remotely, E3, A Resolution Amending the City Council Policy Related to Commissions and Committees, E4, Accept the Housing, the 2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, E5, The Adoption of an Ordnance on Water Conservation, E6, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing the Annual Destruction of Obsolete Records, and E7, Adoption of a Resolution Withdrawing from the California Community Housing Agency. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Karen Grove.
Thank you. Um, I am calling in to comment on the Housing Element Annual Performance Report. And I am the Chair of the Housing Commission. I believe that Heather Leach may also be joining me. We'd like to be standing side by side, but can't do that over Zoom. Uh, but one of the things that we wanted to highlight is the income levels that we serve with our, um, affordable housing. We're doing very well at getting closer to meeting our low-income, below-market-rate housing targets for very low and, um, low-income housing. And we're far exceeding our above-moderate-income housing, more so than even other cities. Uh, but one of the things we asked to be added to the staff report, and it was, and we really appreciate that, is how the BMR income levels really are mismatched with low-income earners in Menlo Park. Because the income levels that are distributed, assuming that incomes are linearly distributed, but in fact, we have people at the very low end of the spectrum and people at the very high end of the spectrum. So while we provide BMR housing in the middle, most of the people who are rent burdened are far to the lower end, lower than those bands. In fact, uh, if you look at income by race in Menlo Park, according to the Berry Atlas Equity Atlas, um, data, the mean income, and I took notes and then I've lost them on my computer, but the mean income for Black and Latino residents in Menlo Park is in the $50,000, at $40,000 and $50,000 a year, whereas it's over 150,000 for white residents. So all of this is to say that extremely low-income and very low-income housing is extremely important to the rent burdened people in our city who tend to be Black and Latino. Um, it's also a lack of extremely low-income housing is the number one um, cause of homelessness. So although we're doing very well, and I do want to congratulate that us for that, a lot of things happened. We built a lot of affordable houses. There's so much more I wanted to say, um, but I'm running out of town time. Um, we do need to prioritize extremely low-income, and it would be great, and some cities are doing this to track that number, even though that's not a specific RIN number. It may be in the future required of us to track extremely low-income housing separately. Um, also going forward, I want to just note, we wanted to lift up that the very low-income housing that we have built has been a result of our last Housing Element, where we put in place an affordable housing overlay. Um, we need to update that to keep pace with the state density bonus. Um, but, um, we've done it before. We can do it again. We just need to do it five times as much in the next cycle as we did in the last cycle. Thank you. I'm sorry I ran out of time.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar, Items E1 through E7. Seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, please provide the update for Item E3.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Um, I did want to, uh, update the public as well as the City Council, uh, that the policy originally showed the Finance and Audit Committee having a five-member committee, when in fact it is seven. So the policy has been updated to reflect that seven-member body opposed to five. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, would you like to, uh, discuss E6?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I have a couple of questions that she sent to, um, Ms. Heron and to the City Attorney prior. Um, the first question is, are the records that are totally destroyed erased, or are they still accessible, um, online?
Um, thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I will field these questions and look to Judy if, um, she disagrees or wants to, uh, wants to answer herself. Uh, yes, the records are completely destroyed, um, electronically and physically, once the records are approved for destruction.
One thing I would like to add to that, unless it's otherwise noted, some of them, um, explain that they're kept like permanently electronically, so only the physical copy is destroyed, but unless it's noted, then yes, it is totally erased.
Thank you, and I have just two more questions. Um, the next one is, uh, can the agenda packet destruction be, um, can it be, can we hold off on doing it until the full build-out of the downtown specific plan and connect memo, the general plan update?
I can start with the, uh, response to that. Um, for agenda packets, those are kept permanently electronically. Um, so we do ensure that every page, front and back, have been, been scanned and retained. Um, and the request before you tonight is to destroy the physical copy. I can turn it over to either the City Attorney or to our interim City Manager for further clarification.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Thank you, City Clerk Karen, and, and because of that, um, Councilmember Taylor, I think that the responses, they will be retained, um, until, um, those projects are complete.
Thank you. And my, my last question is, um, the retention period for, um, some of our police records, um, I believe they were at five years. Um, is it possible for it to be 10, or at least, um, waiting until we, um, complete the reimagining public safety?
So yeah, the answer is yes. The City Council could elect to have a longer retention period than required by, uh, state law. And so the city could elect to, um, retain those records for a period of 10 years instead of five. Um, if the council wanted to do that, we'd need to revise the retention schedule, um, which is not before the council this evening, and, and so we'd have to bring that back. The council can decide whether or not to approve the destruction request this evening, which is based on a five-year retention period for a number of the item, items that I think you're referring to. Um, and then we would separately have to bring back the retention schedule.
Thank you. Uh, through the mayor, I have a, of actually a follow-up question, um, for interim City Manager.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Murphy, I just wanted to, just to find out what the impact would be, um, if we, um, extended the, um, destruction period until after the reimagining of public safety was complete.
Let's see, so I guess I would want one clarification. Is it all of the, all of the police records that are listed here, or, or, or certain ones?
Just certain ones, definitely not all.
Uh, then I guess it would depend on what those certain ones, ones are, but if it's a matter of, uh, extending it for, for one year, I don't believe that would be, um, a huge impact, but would be good if we could identify what those specific ones are. Cause if we can proceed with the, the destruction of the other ones, that, uh, that would be, um, appreciated.
Thank you.
Is there any other City Council discussion or questions on the consent calendar? Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, possibly with, um, Councilmember Taylor, adding some, uh, retention requests?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I, I do think the City Manager and I need, um, clarification on, uh, the requests that if you'd like something to come back to the council, uh, but we can take that after you approve the rest of the agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, would you like to, um, make a motion that it would include, um, any request for, uh, E6? Where are you comfortable moving ahead as is?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Um, I am actually, I'm, I'm comfortable, um, moving forward since the, um, staff followed up on my questions. And then also, just wanted to, um, just have a few questions put on record. Thank you.
So did you want additional questions on record at this point? Do you want, and how about, would you like to make a mo, or would you please make a motion that includes whatever you would like to have?
The, the challenge, Mayor Nash, is that the, um, the records, the specific records, I don't have them written down. I would have to go back through my notes, um, just to give you the specific ones, but just thinking about, I know that we're in the middle of, of a process with reimagining policing and reimagining public safety. And so, um, which I'm guessing, and I did not ask Chief Norris this ahead of time, we'll be looking at the timeline of later this fall. And I believe that some of the records may be helpful just to look at how much progress we've actually made.
Thank you. So I would like to move that we approve the consent calendar, um, accept the police records on E6, and that we bring that back to council, um, at a later date. Does that cover your concerns? Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and I just noticed that Chief Norris came on, and since I do, um, to speak with him.
Councilmember, I, I, and I apologize for this, but upon getting promoted to a panelist, I missed probably what was the most important part of what, of what you just said, uh, which is, which is trying to understand, you know, what your interests are in this. Um, I could tell you just for background that, that there are a large number of records here that have been, you know, essentially set for destruction based on the current retention schedule and waiting for destruction for quite some time, um, that, uh, that we would, we would like to see followed through the process, but I, but I'd love to hear what your interests are in terms of retaining those records, uh, many of which are, are likely confidential and wouldn't be able to be brought into any kind of public forum.
Thank you, Chief Norris, and, and my interest is only just to look at, um, progress. And so if, if we're looking back, um, just on to see where we started, um, and if those records are not available, then, so that's primarily what my concern was. And so, um, a short period of time, and it's just, um, a few months as far as when we would complete the reimagining public safety.
But what, what I can tell you is, I'm certainly willing to do whatever council would like. Um, but, uh, but for, you know, just to, to give you kind of a, a grasp of what we're looking at, none of the, none of the records, if you're talking about, you know, internal affairs cases, that type of thing, um, would be available in a public forum in any way that we could, that we could look at a, as a, as, as a group and a comparative process. Um, that being said, you know, we're well aware of, you know, what the, the total numbers are of, of, of community complaints over the years, and, and we'll be able to look at those comparisons of, of the, the total numbers, uh, overall, over time, and there, and, and any records that require additional retention, you know, based on, based on their disposition or based on the, the seriousness of them. Um, you know, those, those would have different retention schedules regardless, um, but they would not be available for the public. So, um, so in, in order to accomplish our goal, um, I think what we're looking at is, you know, how are we assessing practices? How are we changing practices towards the future? I don't know that the retention of these records would help us with the public process that we are, that we're engaging in right now, as much as the, the discussion that we're having, you know, internally and externally about our practices. Um, I'm hoping I am, I'm answering that correctly, but I hope that makes sense.
Yes, yes, it does. Definitely does, Chief Norris. Thank you. Mayor Nash, on that note, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you very much. So, um, City Attorney Heron, do I need to withdraw my original motion, or are we fine just proceeding with?
Do you want to second this motion?
I will second the motion.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Taylor, and a second by Mayor Nash to approve the consent calendar. By roll call vote, City Council Member Mueller.
Yes.
City Council Member Combs.
Yes.
City Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Woolson.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The first regular business item is F1, Consider and Adopt a Resolution Approving the Water Supply Assessment for the Commonwealth Building 3 Project. To introduce the item is Contract Planner, Pail Baggett.
Good evening, respectful, um, mayor, members of the City Council, members of the community. I will wait for the presentation to come online. Thank you. Um, I hope everybody can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, so the project we're here this evening is the review of the water supply assessment for the Commonwealth, um, building. This is the third building on the site. And the project site is located at 122, uh, excuse me, 162 and 164 Jefferson Drive. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so the presentation is, um, is compiled in the following format. Uh, first, I will introduce the purpose of the meeting, the purpose of reviewing the WSA for the project. Uh, then go over the project specifications, uh, the projected water demand for the project, the, uh, water supply availability for the project, and then finally the recommendation. Um, next slide, please. So the purpose of the, uh, purpose of this meeting, as I mentioned earlier, is to review the water, uh, supply assessment. The proposed project is around, uh, 250,000 square feet with over, uh, approximately 2,000 employees, uh, being introduced to the site, which meets the requirement, uh, but under which we need to, uh, uh, create a water supply assessment for the project. The council is, uh, is acting today as the governing body for the Menlo Park Municipal Water. Um, the water supply assessment for this project evaluates the, uh, whether there is sufficient water available to meet the project demands. Um, under a normal year, um, that is a normal rain year, a single dry year, and multiple dryers over a period of 15 years. The project is expected to be constructed up and running by 2025 if approved. Um, all the other accounts, uh, for planned growth in the service area are also included in this assessment. Um, if the council were to approve the, the water supply assessment today, the city is not committed to serve water, uh, to the proposed project. The city does not endorse the merits of the project, or the city would not approve the project through this action. However, next slide, please. This, uh, approving the WSA today would allow the, uh, the city to incorporate the information from the WSA into the project environmental impact report that is being created right now, and is expected to be released in the second quarter. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the proposed project. Uh, the project is, uh, zoned office bonus. It's, uh, on an existing 13.3 acre site. As I mentioned previously, there are a couple of buildings currently existing on the project site, and this project would add one more building, about 250,000 square feet on the site, along with a new parking garage and publicly accessible open space. The existing two buildings are proposed to remain on the site. Then the, uh, and the ultimate for area ratio of the site would be 88%. And the project is located in the bayfront area, which is serviced by the lower zone, uh, by the Menlo Park Municipal Water Service Area. Next slide, please. Uh, in order to calculate the projected water demand, uh, we look at the water requirements of the project. As part of the zoning requirement at the site, the, uh, project is required to include the sustainability features. Uh, these features include other low-flow fixtures, uh, within the building, um, as well as limiting the water use for irrigation, consistent with the, uh, allowance according to the model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. Additionally, the project will be required to be dual piped, uh, which allows the water, uh, allows the project to use recycled water when it is available. The availability of the recycled water where in the area will depend on the West Bay Cemetery, uh, district projects. This project was part of the accumulative analysis that was done for the connect manager plan update, um, as well as the connect mental water supply evaluation and EIR. This project is also included in the Menlo Park Municipal Water 2020 Upper Water Management Plan. Next slide, please. Considering, um, everything that, uh, is included in the project, the fixtures, the irrigation requirement, the cooling tower requirement and other requirements, uh, the WSA estimates that the, the proposed projected portable water demand for the project would be 14 million gallons per year. The overall, um, Menlo Park, uh, the overall connect Menlo projected water demand after build-out is estimated to be 343 million gallons per year. Um, considering all the recently approved projects and the projects that are currently in the planning stage, the water demand is estimated to be 100, approximately 112 million gallons per year. Therefore, approving the WSA today would lend to approximately 217 million gallons of portable water available for future projects, um, that are, that could be developed under the Connect Menlo, uh, general plan. Next slide, please. So, um, talking a little bit about the water supply availability, as you know that, uh, Menlo Park Municipal Water purchases all this portable water from regional water, um, supply, um, agency, which is operated by the San Francisco Municipal, um, utility, uh, San, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. The Menlo Park Municipal Water is guaranteed under this contract to have, uh, approximately 1,630 million gallons of water per year through the year 2034. per year through the year 2034. However, the reliability of this water in the drought years is affected by the 2018 Bay Delta Amendment, which requires release of 40% of unimpaled flow of three San Walking River tributaries to increase the fish population each year from February to June. The project WSA therefore evaluates the availability of water under two scenarios. The first being where the Bay Delta Plan implementation has occurred and the second where the Bay Delta Plan implementation has not occurred. Next slide, please. As you can see, this slide summarizes the findings of the WSA. Under both scenarios, under normal rain years, there would be sufficient water available to service the project site and meet the projected demand. However, under, under the, under the table where implementation of the Bay Delta Plan Amendment is done, under the single or multiple drought years, there is significant water shortages, which would require implementation of water shortage contingency plan up to level five. However, if the Bay Delta Plan Amendment is not implemented, then there would be sufficient water under normal years as well as single dry years. And for multiple dry year scenario, there would be 16.5% water reduction required in fourth and fifth consecutive dry, dry years. The Menlo Park Municipal Water expects to address supply shortages through water demand restrictions and other actions by implementing its water shortage contingency plan, which was adopted part of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. As you know, the plan has six levels, which begins action with level one at an up to 10% shortage through level six at a greater than 50% shortage. The actions include public outreach, limiting the irrigation, limits on portable water use for pools, washing vehicles, et cetera. Drought surcharges and at level five, Menlo Park Municipal Water could utilize the emergency water supply that was written recently constructed. Recently, the City Council took action to enact the state water shortage contingency plan, stage one, and adopt a water conservation plan to enforce the state water Resources Control Board's Emergency Regulation, which prohibits waste pool water use practices. Next slide, please. The water demand associated with the result of connect Menlo, which includes this project, is also included in the Menlo Park Municipal Water Demand Projections that in its 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. And the proposed project would be subject to the same water conservation and water use restrictions as other users within the Menlo Park Municipal Water System as need arises. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council approve a resolution approving the WSA. Approval of this WSA would not mean that that is would not mean that the project is approved. Like I mentioned previously, it would only mean that the WSA can be included in the project environmental impact report. Actually, there is, I want to make sure that it's understood that there are no changes to the staff report that there is a mistake on this slide, so please ignore point one. And with that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you for your time. We also have Ms. Elizabeth Dryer, who is, who is the consultant who prepared the WSA available to answer any questions and I'm available as well. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, would you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F1, consider and adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment for the Commonwealth Building 3 project. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landlany or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item F1. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. We are now open for City Council discussion. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion by City Council Member Mueller and a second by City Council Member Taylor to adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment prepared for the proposed Commonwealth Building 3 project located at 162 to 164 Jefferson Drive. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Combs.
Yes.
City Council Member Mueller.
Yep.
City Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The last regular business item is F2, authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with the M Group for the Housing Element Update Project and Appropriate Funds. To introduce this item is Assistant Community Development Director, Deanna Chow.
Good evening, Mayor Nash, members of the City Council, Deanna Chow. Mayor Nash, would you like me to proceed with a brief presentation or some introductory remarks?
Is there any desire to have a presentation or I believe just remarks would be terrific. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So this evening before the City Council, we are bringing forward a proposed scope and budget amendment to the Housing Element Contract. So the agreement was previously approved and authorized by the City Council with the M Group, who was selected as the consultant to prepare our Housing Element Update Project. And so that consists of the Housing Element, the Safety Element Update, as well as the preparation of a new environmental justice element. And so that contract, as I mentioned, was approved for $982,000. Originally, there was a budget that was appropriated for $1.5 million in the fiscal year 2021 budget as part of the City Council's identification of this project as a City Council priority. Since then, we've been working diligently for the last year working with the consultant team, who is comprised of a number of different consultants based upon their technical expertise. And we are bringing forward a contract amendment proposal to to further enhance and strengthen our, our work. So one of the consultants that we're bringing forward is based upon guidance from the City Council to bring forward a community-based organization. We have identified climate resilient communities to partner with. And so the proposed scope that you see includes their scope and work. It also includes enhancements from Change Lab Solutions, who will be working with us as a policy advisor and outreach or a policy advisor and on environmental justice. It also includes work on a level of service analysis for the transportation analysis for the as part of the project and then also additional enhancements, augmentation for the work that M Group continues to do on this complex project. So happy to answer questions. I believe Jeff Bradley here with the M Group is also available for questions as well. And I believe Violet Sayana, who is the Executive Director of CRC, is also available if there's further clarifications needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Clerk Karen, would you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F2, authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with the M Group for the Housing Element Update Project and Appropriate Funds. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Annie H.
Hello. Hi, I just had a question for Deanna briefly when she was mentioning about transportation analysis for the project. What exactly did that mean? That was my only question.
Great, thank you for your comment, question. So this will be the final call for public comment on item F2. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much. And I see Assistant Community Director, Development Director Chow. Please go ahead with responding to the comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I believe the question was related to when I mentioned the level of service analysis and what does that mean? So so currently, so we do a traffic analysis as part of the California Environmental Quality Act that is based upon a different metric that is based upon vehicle miles traveled and that is part of an existing scope of work and our consultant team is working on that. Separately, our general plan has a policy in our circulation element to look at a different metric, which is a level of service, which has historically been a metric that was used until more recent change over into vehicle miles traveled as, as the sort of threshold or the, the metric to use for environmental review. So our current transportation impact analysis guidelines also requires a LOS analysis for, for certain projects. And so the proposed scope includes that LOS analysis to supplement as another piece of information. It is not part of the environmental review. It's used as another, another tool for, for information purposes.
Thank you very much. So we'll now open for City Council discussion. Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you, Mayor Nash and Ms. Chow. Following up on the question about transportation analysis and the specifically the LOS analysis, does the LOS analysis being done in the housing element tie us to any mitigations for future projects that are identified in the housing element?
Thank you, if I, if I may address that question. So yes, just to further clarify, so LOS is, is not a, a sequoia threshold, not a sequel metric. And so it would not be reviewed as part of mitigation measures that would be included in an environmental impact report. There could be measures that are identified as a result of the LOS study and those could be considered by the City Council and determine whether or not to proceed with them or not. So they would not be automatic, they would not be considered mitigation measures in the EIR. They would be a separate separate list of items that would be considered by the, the City Council and could be determined at that time whether or not to proceed with them or not.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chow. So I, I, I've expressed concerns to the council previously about our continuous, continual use of LOS and how I believe it conflicts with our safety and safety goals and reducing vehicle miles traveled. That being said, this item is specific to the housing element and not specific to looking at LOS on a larger scale. So I'm, I'm okay approving this for now, but I am very interested in revisiting the general plan and the thresholds we have in there regarding LOS and the transportation impact analysis. So Mayor, I probably will be following up with you to see if we can agenda something about that in the future. But those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I just have some quick questions for Deanna, just so that we can go ahead and just outline what we're talking about. So Deanna, the LOS standard that we're talking about here, the way that you are going to, the way that the consultant will be using it and our staff be using it basically measures the number of car trips as, not, excuse me, the number, yeah, the number of car trips as it approaches the intersection. Is that correct?
Right, it, it looks at the delay at intersections.
And it does that by counting car trips, expected car trips?
I think it looks at
or count car counts.
Trips, number of trips and the delay in which it goes through an intersection.
Okay, and so like I've seen LOS on reports before where it'll show the number of cars, then the increase in car counts expected at each intersection going through, going at each different direction. Is that right? And then, then there's an estimate of whether or not the LOS drops from like an A, if from an A to an O D or something like that. Is that an accurate description?
I think so, yes. So the A through D, so those are different like levels of service. So A being great and then as you experience more delay, you, you have, you go down sort of that, the alphabet. I think our Public Assistant Public Works Director, Hugh Louch, is also here with us if there are more technical questions. So if you would like, he can help assist with some of the technical questions.
I don't want to get into any more technicality than, than what we discussed. But what I'm trying to relay for those watching a full transparency is that when you use the LOS method, if you actually go and look at it and it's listed in the report, you can look at the number of trips that are expected to increase at any, at any intersection. Is that right?
We're looking at increased delay at the intersections.
But you can, but the data to calculate that actually, someone can look at the increased trips at those intersections.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, okay. I remember doing that for Stanford project and other projects in the city. That's something that you don't look at vehicle mile, with the vehicle miles travel, travel standard. It's my understanding. When you look at the data, is that correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Is that same information available for the intersections in the vehicle miles traveled analysis?
It's a, it's a different metric that's used and so they're looking at miles traveled in an area versus like trips in a specific intersection. So they're, they're sort of two completely different metrics that are being looked at.
So if you want to be fully transparent with the public about how many trips are going to be expected at an intersection and you want to show them that data, the LOS standard will do that, the vehicle miles traveled won't.
Right.
Okay, and so in this method, in this analysis, because we're using the LOS method, but we're not tying it to any requirement for improvement, it's just, it's, it's an opportunity just to provide transparency to the public of what the impact of increased trips will be at, increased car trips will be at an intersection. And then we can decide later, right? Is that basically what the effect is?
Right, so LOS is not a metric or a threshold in our SEQA documents. It's another informational tool for the City Council and members of the public to better understand sort of a different level of traffic, right? So you're looking at time delay versus sort of like how the proximity of travels, miles traveled between like residential and, and jobs. And so they're, they're just, they're different metrics. And the LOS is something that can be used. It will potentially identify measures, whether they're improvements to turn lanes or signals or additional lanes. I mean, there's, there's different measures that could potentially be identified as a result of an LOS study. But again, those are not tied to mitigation and those are things that the City Council can consider whether or not to implement them.
Okay, so just
It provides information for the City Council to consider.
And the public to understand what the impact is at an intersection, correct? I think that's right, right? It's also, it's not just for the City Council, it's for the public as a transparency document.
Yes, and I, I just want to make sure that if, if my public works colleagues are, are cringing at me my transportation knowledge here, I'm happy to have them further clarify if, if you need, if you'd like. knowledge here, I'm happy to have them further clarify if, if you need, if you'd like.
It's okay. I, I don't have any other questions on it. I've seen LOS standard used a long time, so.
Yes, it's supposed to be the metric.
But I know there's a lot of people interested in the housing element, so I wanted to make clear why we were making sure that those card, that car trip analysis was going to be included in the, in looking at the intersections for the public to go ahead and understand and consume. So, thank you.
Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and thank you, Ms. Chow, for the explanation. I want to confirm, attachment A is all work that hasn't been done and to the staff report. So this is all future-looking work?
Yes, so attachment A includes work that has been done to keep things moving. So whether it might be additional, a pop-up event, because we heard that maybe multiple locations would be better to have them in two separate locations in the city. Additional meetings that might have resulted from either subcommittees or, or like on the Community Engagement Outreach Committee, or additional city council meetings and planning commission, we added one, I think, housing commission meeting. And so there is some work that has been done to keep the project advancing and addressing questions. And and then there's certainly work that is anticipated for the remainder of the project. And so it is a combination of the two in that attachment A for the amendment.
And so then, in the initial contract, and my apologies if this is, if I just missed it, of $900,000, so that money has all been consumed?
No, it, it has, it has not been consumed. It, there are still items that we are still producing. So the preparation of the environmental justice element, the safety element, work on the environmental impact report, the fiscal impact analysis. So all of those components are included in the original contract. There are things that we, that we probably have expended about a little over half, maybe, of, of the budget. And so the remainder is for bringing on a CBO and for anticipated levels of engagement that we will be working through. And, and just because of the complexity of what we've seen with the preparation for our staff, city council meetings, commission meetings, there were some increases in some of those already included items, but just an additional staff hours allocated to that, just given based upon our past experience.
And so like when I'm looking through, like, so the CEOC meetings, $18,000, is that prospective, or is that support for meetings that have already occurred?
That would be for meetings that would already occur. I believe on that particular item, there were some additional there was time, more time spent than I think had previously been anticipated by the consultant team. There were also additional survey subcommittee meetings that were not originally anticipated. And then there was additional work on the survey itself based upon feedback to, to prepare in order to launch it. So that work
And the $8,000 is, is, is it additional, like, right, we're saying, if we're just focusing, or
Yes.
Move on to the farmer's market, like, right, obviously, there was some money originally budgeted for that.
That's correct.
Additional $9,000 represents additional, right? And the same with planning commission, $18,000 additional. It would setting the numbers aside, it would be nice to see that clearly laid out, like, what was what these funds have been utilized of this additional budget amount that you're asking to this point? And what is, is future-looking? Just, just so we're sort of clearly communicating with the public, because I completely understand, and I know that the staff has been completely transparent, that M group and the work here was going over budget. So there is, there is, there's no question about that, and I certainly have transparency in that. But at this moment in which we are sort of approving this, this additional funds, I think it would be nice to understand at this moment, like, this is the, this is the overage up to this point, and then this is what is going forward. That would be great. Obviously, if it's something that's, it doesn't have an impact on, on my, my vote tonight. And obviously, if it's something that's going to consume lots of time, then that, that I wouldn't ask for, but, but it may be necessary, and it may already exist just from a budgeting perspective of having that, that check-in. Other than that, that was all of my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, do you have any questions?
No, I do not, Mayor Nash. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion? All right, I will move to approve item, this item and F2, and I'm looking for a second.
I'll second, Mayor Nash.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. City Clerk Karen, would you please call for a vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the table by Mayor Nash and a second by city council member Taylor to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with the M group for the housing element update in the amount of $490,052 for a total contract amount of $1,472,052 and appropriate $1,423,785 from unassigned fund balance in the general fund. Any further city council question or discussion?
I guess I would just like to note that Councilmember Combs has requested, if it is not too difficult, that a report is provided, what has been spent to date and what is future spending. Not to be part of the motion, but just to note for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Any other further city council question or discussion? Seeing no hands by roll call vote, city council member Combs.
Yes.
City Council Member Mueller.
Yes.
City Council Member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I also wanted to provide a brief update on item G2 before I take public comment. I inadvertently left out a November 2021 meeting for the FAC, and that was sent to the city council, and it will be updated in minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now with that, we will be opening public comment for information items. G1, city council agenda topics. G2, receive and file the city council and advisory body annual attendance report. G3, briefing on the 2030 climate action plan strategies, numbers one, three, and five. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. Final call for public comment on our informational items, G1 through G3. Seeing none, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any city council questions on any of the information items? Thank you. We'll move on to the city manager's report, and interim city manager, Justin Murphy.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to make some reports. So I mentioned previously that the city was going to be conducting an employee recognition event. I'd like to take the opportunity to announce the, some award winners for 2021. So we had, these were nominations by employees, and then a selection panel of, of employees. So for employee excellence awards, we have Angela Lamb, Polly Jensen, Myra Monhey, Ronnie Singh, Kristen Strube, and the Police Patrol and Communications Dispatch. So those were for awards of innovation, special accomplishments, customer service, leading mentoring, and teamwork. So great work to all of those award winners. And then we also had category of employee of the year by department. And so for library, community services, library, it's Winnie Ng. Library, community services, community services is Ariel Tenahero. Community development is Thomas Rogers. Public Works is Holani Vaca. Police is Alan Swanson, and admin services and city manager's office is Lisa Atwood. So congratulations to all of those employee, employees that won awards, and there are quite a few great nominations that came in. So all in all, great event, and thank you, Mayor Nash and Vice Mayor Willison for attending. It was a beautiful day. Then I just had three updates regarding upcoming meetings. So one is the independent redistricting commission. We'll be reviewing draft maps for consideration this Thursday, March 24th at 5:00 PM, and that is a hybrid meeting with the in-person portion here at the city council chambers. We'll have another hybrid meeting related to the environmental justice and safety elements, and that meeting's on Tuesday, April 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And information regarding that is also available on the city's website, can be reached at menlopark.org/housingelement. And the last one is a plug for the advisory body recruitment. The current deadline is April 13th. That's a Wednesday at 5:00 PM, and information is available there at menlopark.org/commissions. So those are a few upcoming meetings and deadlines. And that's, that concludes my reports.
Thank you, and thank you. Congratulations to all the employees that were recognized, and many thanks to all staff who are keeping our city up and running at this time. Thank you. Are there any reports from city council members since the March 8th city council meeting? City Clerk Karen, will you please call for public comment for closed session item J1?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on closed session item J1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on closed session item J1. Seeing none, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. The city council will now adjourn this regular meeting and reconvene in closed session. The closed session report out will occur at the April 12th city council meeting. Thank you.